As I just told you what a great job he's doing. Hello, hello, hello. There we go. Okay. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we may please have a few moments of silence for Carrie Madden and Chad Atkins. Please be seated. And when you're ready, the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem LeVell.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. And are there any announcements or written communications?
I have an announcement. Happy Election Day. Just a reminder that the vote center is located on the second floor of the Catalina Conservancy Trailhead Center. It will be open until eight o'clock PM today. You still have time to vote and also drop your ballot in the drop box located outside of the Avalon Library. And city staff has received one written communication from Robert Glasser. Copies have been distributed to City Council and is filed in the City Clerk's office, and that's regarding item number six on the agenda tonight.
Department head reports.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. The Public Works Crew is extremely busy the next couple of months. In fact, we're busier now than the summer season. Summer season is just routine cleanup. Now we're going into preventative maintenance projects, storm prep. So here are some examples of what they've been working on. City Hall renovations are continuing. They installed seven new doors and frames. They're working with PERC on jetting and inspecting the sewer lines throughout town, which is an essential assessment to help us plan for repairs and meet wastewater system permits. The Public Works Crew has also assembled and installed a cemetery columbarium wall, which was extremely intricate. Each niche wall or little box, over a hundred of them. So it was very tedious to assemble, but they put it all together and installed it today. Also, they helped harbor maintenance with the Barbara Peterson Dock Foundation, and in the next couple of weeks, they will be working with Conservancy on planting native plants at JMF. Working with West Coast and trimming the trees around town, working with community services, installing holiday lighting and decorations. And tomorrow, exciting, interesting project they'll be doing is on Wednesday and Thursday, they'll be working with Island Company and Conservancy, washing down the streets and sidewalks throughout town. They will start at 6:00 AM and work till noon. They will tie in the fire hoses into the fire hydrants, use salt water to wash down. They will push all that water with push brooms down into the low flows. And behind them, our pressure, hot pressure washer will come in doing spot cleaning throughout the sidewalks and most greasy areas. The salt water then goes through our drains into our wastewater system. I know that was a concern and a question last time, but it doesn't go right into the bay. It goes into the low flows, into our system. And then we coordinated on Friday to have PERC come and do the cleaning of those low flows. So that would be, it's quite a feat. I think it's really exciting to have three huge entities representing out there for the next couple of days.
And what's, I'm sorry, are they doing from where to where?
So they're gonna start, they're gonna meet at 6:00 AM at Blue Water. They're gonna go up the street there on Metropole, kind of on the Vons area, and then work all the way down. And then they'll move to the next street, kind of go up on Catalina, then go back into Front Street, and then the next street, so on and so on. And they're gonna do that for two days to see how far they get into town. And if we need an extra third day, that will be next week on a Wednesday or Thursday. But I'm hopeful. I mean, we're talking about eleven, twelve folks out there total, working on this. So it will be a huge endeavor. And I'm happy of the collaboration. I think that's been really wonderful.
Yes, very good.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Orin Karstafen, Harbor Master. Since our last report Tuesday, October 22nd, patrol moored 299 boats for a total of 1,914 nights. Patrol warned or advised 11 individuals of municipal code violations, which included one warning inside the marine protected area. Patrol wrote two citations for municipal code violations. Patrol responded to four medical calls. We provided public assistance 36 times. We also completed 188 security patrols of the facilities and the surrounding waters during this period. As you're probably aware, the harbor is currently gearing up for a strong Santa Ana condition over the next couple of days. Pretty much mitigated all the measures in the harbor, moving everybody over into the corner, talking to the anchorage boats, bringing in who we can. There probably will remain at least one boat, maybe two boats, that are unattended. And then having said that, we did receive that the Navigator of the Seas is canceling tomorrow's visit to Avalon.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The Navigator of the Seas canceling their visit for Avalon tomorrow. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, city council, Michael Alguiria, Fire Chief. To piggyback on what Orin said, we are expecting some winds. They're calling for a storm warning, which is above a gale for mostly up near Malibu, but they do have us include all the way to Orange County. So just be, we put out, we'll put out a statement later today about just your boats, don't go near the rocks, don't go down to watch the water. Please, on your decks and stuff, just make sure everything's tied down. And then again, please don't park in the fire lanes, especially on the terraces on these days. And don't be double parked where we're able to get by quickly to get something if it starts. We will have extra staffing on to be ready for that. In October, we ran 87 total calls, 66 medical, 21 fire-related. I believe we're about 40 short of 1,000 as of right now. We participated with the hospital yesterday down on Front Street, and we did a Stop the Bleed campaign with people from St. Mary's in Long Beach. And we did a class for about 40 people combined, two different classes. That was taught in both English and Spanish. We've been working with Alexis and Rosa Valenzuela, works at the hospital. We've been including them in all our MCI, Mass Casualty Trainings and Disaster Talks that we've been having. Alumni Weekend, there's nothing scheduled for Sunday, so on Sunday, we want to host a alumni manuel pancake breakfast. So on Sunday morning after the thing at the casino, on Sunday, we'll be hosting breakfast for everybody. I believe we put $5 at the door.
Where's it gonna be?
It's gonna be at the fire station. And then we'll have, the guys will have shirts and sweatshirts and T-shirts for sale for all them before they get back on the boat.
Very nice, very nice. Questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question. I know that last year, the school was having issues with the fire alarm going off so often. I know we had one today. Is there anything that we're doing proactively to try to stop what happened last year?
Yes, I spoke with the school safety after that incident, and we cleared everything up. There's some new laws that went into effect, some new things where if the alarm goes off, we're not immediately notified. They do call the school to verify. And that's an attempt to cancel out all the false alarms. So they do call the school to verify. The school's very busy. So now when there's one, they will be calling us, so we could go and get there quicker. But I spoke with Emma today and the office staff, and we talked about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, city council. Matthew King, the Sheriff's Station Captain. Since our last meeting, we had 202 calls for service. We made 15 traffic stops. During those calls, we made one arrest for domestic violence. We have, we're tentatively scheduled for the toy giveaway this year on Friday, December 20th, with Maverick Helicopters. And tonight, we have extra staff for the election, and as soon as the polls close, we'll be bringing the ballots over on the boat to the other side.
Questions, comments?
Hi. First, I do want to say thank you. During Halloween, I saw you guys patrolling everywhere, so thank you so very much. I would say that this Halloween was a little bit more intense than maybe the last, so I do appreciate your presence. My question was, for those that may have gotten cited for being out and about with like the Orbi guns, the airsoft guns, what is that citation looking like for them?
What's the citation looking like?
Yeah. Do they get just a ticket? They have to go to the mainland, or what is it?
Yeah, actually, so far, what we've done is we've confiscated a few of the guns with permission of the family, and we're calling the families out. And we've taken one instant report based on possible assault charges with the gun. And the citation is just basically giving them a date to go to court on that assault charge.
Is there a way for us to work with the school of possibly doing or bringing back community service? Just, you know, having them also appreciate the island, and I know we also have a problem with trash, so, you know, maybe.
Actually, primarily what we do with anyone under the age of 18 right now is we try to give them a diversion, because it forces them to go to court, a class, for about six months. And what that does is it defers them from going to court on it. So if they enter the diversion program and they complete it, then it's actually basically off the record completely. They never get any kind of record whatsoever. If they don't complete it, then we refer it back to the DA's office for filing. We don't have any kind of community service right now.
And I don't know if part of that falls on us, because they used to give them to us all the time, and they would be with Public Works guys or whatever, but I don't know if it's because of liability or why we really.
Is there a possibility of doing that for the kids? I mean, I know it would, you know, bring back a part of cleaning up for the community, because I know there's a lot of trash everywhere where they do hang out.
I completely agree. I think it's great to do. Unfortunately, I, my understanding is that we don't do it here anymore, so.
Okay. Is that something we can look into?
I can tell you, we've had conversations with our insurance provider, and they're pretty strongly discouraging our role in that because of the liability end of it. But we can certainly revisit that.
Please, if we could. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just wanted to quickly provide a revenue update. August TOT numbers were up 13%. Vacation rentals were 18%, and right now hotels are at 10%, but we have a couple of late payments, so I would expect that to be around 18% once we get those collected. It's kind of too soon to compile the September numbers, as they were due on the 31st, but for nightly moorings, September numbers were down 4.4%. And October nightly moorings were down 6.7%. So hopefully, they're the outliers, but that's where we're at. August cross-channel was up 13.7%, but again, those August numbers are compared to August of '23, where we had the tropical storm event.
Good news.
All right, unless there's anything else?
Questions. Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. This past Halloween was pretty amazing. The decorations downtown with the mermaid skeletons, giant spiders, the octopus in the fountain. All that came from my amazing staff of Marissa Maronis, Soul Vines, and Constant Rucks, as well as all the crafts booths that we had down there, as well as the zombie laser tag, which was busy until we closed. We had a line there until it closed. The web maze, movies on the stage, candy bags for every kid who came in costume. I feel like this year, we've really outdone ourselves, and we're already trying to think about what we're going to do again next year. And with that, I want to be able to thank those who helped make this happen, such as the school for helping to organize the children's parade that came through Front Street, as well as Nick Murrow for documenting the day with pictures. You can see that online. He's put it all out there online, as well as I believe he has a drone shot of the whole parade as well. The Fire Department for supplying popcorn to everyone. And the Lions Club, especially the Lions Club, who donated funds to allow us to create this wonderful community event. So as you can tell, it's not just us. It's everybody who's involved in the communities, while we love these events and having them downtown. On this Saturday, November 9th, the 2024 Half Marathon and 10K will be here. The first race for the half marathon starts at 8:00 AM. 8:15 will be the 10K, and then there'll be a kids' run at 10:00 AM. So we'd like you to come out and support the over 800 runners who will be coming here. Hopefully, depending on the weather and all that, that kind of scares me. This is all brought to you by Spectrum Sports. Today being a day where we all get to do our civic duty and vote for president and senate and also all our measures. We're able to do that because we have men and women in our country who have fought for our right to, for these freedoms. So we have a say in who runs our countries and what we're allowed to do. And so for November 11th, this November 11th, we get an opportunity to celebrate our veterans here on Catalina Island. It will be at Veterans Park on Monday, November 11th, at 11:00 AM at the 11th minute. And that will be happening coming this Monday, so please come and join us in honoring those who have risked their lives so we can have these freedoms at home. Up next, we have a primetime event, our next primetime event. It is November 20th. It is Friendsgiving. We will have a Thanksgiving meal provided by Megan Wright and the Catalina Hospitality Group. There will be a paint and sip with our own talented Constant Rucks and a Lotteria for everyone. It will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, either at Pancake Cottage or Catalina Charlie. They're still kind of trying to figure out where the best place for that would be for them. This is all-inclusive, so all that, the paint and sip, the dinner, everything will be just $15. If you're a primetime, you can sign up online or with me here at City Hall, starting tomorrow. U-Soccer signups have started. Our first day of games will be January 12th, Sunday, January 12th, going all the way through February, January, I mean, February 23rd, 2025, with Evaluation Day being just before the break on December 15th, 2024. Divisions run from TK all the way up to 8th grade. Again, we are running a league in conjunction with Major League Soccer, otherwise known as MLS GO, which means we run by their rules, as well as they provide all the uniforms for the kids, all the professional uniforms for the kids. So go to thecityofavalon.com for more information and sign up. I now want to be able to give you a little update on the skate park, because I know that was a topic the last time we were up here. And so to do this, I want to give you a refresher on why we're changing from the skate park to a multi-use facility. You probably recognize this graphic from the last time, right? The current skate park maintenance has been really tough there with graffiti, the continual damage of the equipment, constant broken bottles, the man hours it takes to keep that up. It has become a place of delinquent behavior. The fact that we're losing the gym up at the school, again, because they've increased their youth programs up there as well. They've included middle school programs. Because of that, we've lost a lot of recreational opportunities up there, as well as with Island Company starting their build within a year and a half. We'll be losing that space in a year and a half. So we believe it's a better investment for the limited time that we'll have. It'll be low maintenance. It provides a space to conduct multi-use programming for youth and adults. It'll ease the congestion that we already have at JMF, because we have so many, we have the high school up there. We have our own programs up there. And then we have a large contingency of players who play footsle. We actually, from my understanding, from the main guys who kind of run that footsle group, they have about 50 guys off and on coming up to play there. And we believe it'll also create more public activity. But for us, again, it's about the best use of space for the greater community in a limited space, a limited time. We can provide sports like basketball, footsle, soccer is really what we're looking for with the two courts. We can have, we have volleyball, pickleball. We can do, we can do community days with roller skating and roller blading nights. With a, we have something we've been wanting to do with DJs and make it a fun family day. We talk about open gym days for adults and youth. Again, with the school shutting down, with our inability to get up into the gym, there's over 30 to 40 guys who, and girls. We have girls who come up and play in the, in the open gym basketball. And now they don't have a place to do that. And again, with the footsle. We're also looking at introduction to new, to new programming, such as being able to teach European handball, doing dodgeball, and Skill Day developments. Currently, right now, just in our soccer and basketball alone in our youth programs, from TK to 8th grade, we have 115 kids last year who signed up for soccer and played soccer, 117 played for basketball. Those numbers, just by themselves, represents capturing over one-third of the student body at the school. So we're capturing a third of the kids playing sports. And so we see a wonderful opportunity with that type of excitement of kids playing sports, having a multi-use facility to do stuff like Skill Days and continue building that for them. But we, also in response to community feedback, we have revised our plans to include a skate park, addressing a clear need within our community. You probably recognize this from the last time I had up there, but I had another section on the end. We believe we can have more of a pocket skate park in that area with some of the, with some of the pieces that we have that are still usable and salvageable. There are some in there that are not salvageable because of the fact that the wood is rotted underneath. From the outside, it's spongy, but underneath, it's even worse. It's, the wood's falling apart inside. And so we believe we can salvage almost half of the equipment that is in that skate park and continue a skate flow in that predicted space. And when we say pocket parks, I have a couple comparisons for you. Oh, I need to go back. If you think about Lincoln Park in Long Beach, right, and there's one here called Howlin' Von Dolan Playgrounds in Queens, New York. There are places that had limited space, but were still able to put a park together. It's the one I'm looking at. We would be able to do something like the one that's in, with the equipment that we have, something that's more alongside the Lincoln Park in Long Beach. And in conclusion, we are confident that this design will create a more suitable space for the broader community. As circumstances evolve, we will reassess our spaces to ensure they remain responsive to future requirements. Is there any questions?
Well, I'm just curious. Is there an urgency to this?
Yes, because we will be, we have programs coming up, we have programs coming up, like the basketball program, where we will have no space for those kids to practice in, because we will not have access to the gym.
What about the ones downtown, that basketball?
The space is too small.
Too small?
Yeah, the space is too small for the amount of kids that we have that are playing, as well as you're competing with the public for that space.
And then wasn't there a couple of basketball hoops outside back there at school, or are those gone?
Oh, those aren't available right now, because that's where they have all their construction going on.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And I'm not, I'm not sure, they're not sure whether that's going to continue as an outdoor court.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious as to, why don't we want to hear more from the community about it? I mean, if it's, it's a space that is designed for the community, to benefit the community. And there seems to be a lot of community engagement on social media about this particular issue. And I'm just curious as to, I don't know how my fellow council feels about it, but wouldn't we want to have an agenda item and have people talk about it? Or are we okay with this approach?
I think personally, the fact, because I had called Dave to ask about the questions last, this week, when questions came up about it and saw the petition online and the explanation of losing certain space at the school and JMF for the sake of other programs, was the part that made me understand what the need is now. So the lead time to be able to get those into a space where they can actually be used by the time that that program, sets a program start, is important. I was glad to see that we could do a pocket park. I was glad to see there's a portion of it that's going to be able to be used, and not only will it be able to be used, but it'll be safe, which right now, it feels like some of that equipment is starting to get to the place where it's not safe, both due to heavier equipment that's being used on it and just due to age and elements outside. Um, both due to heavier equipment that's being used on it and just due to age, um, and elements outside. I think that ultimately down the road, there's the goal of having a significantly larger public space that would include a space that would satisfy what it is that people are looking for. The hard part is it's temporary because, for this part right now anyway, because of the construction that's going to take place in a year and a half. So not over investing into a space that's literally going to get torn out and be not usable and then having to rebuild something else and buy completely new equipment potentially makes more sense to me. We, I, I don't know, I don't know. I generally like for public projects like this to go before the public because I think it makes sense. However, because time is of the essence for this particular project to make programs work next year, I'm, I think I'm okay with moving forward with this and knowing that we're going to be bringing the public in for the growth of any new public park space that we have that's permanent after this portion goes away. So that's kind of where I'm sitting.
And I, and I think that Dave has worked well in coming up with a good compromise of basketball court, volleyball court, and still keeping part of the skate park. The skate park is not going away completely. So it's still, they still have that opportunity of using the skate park. So I think it's, for what we're trying to accomplish, I think it's a really good compromise. So it's just.
It's just going to be in steps. Cool. So by the way, I just want to say that, Dave, I am very, very happy with, um, you putting the pocket park in there. And, um, I think it's a great compromise. And my evil goal in bringing this up was to get a little more feedback and information out there to people that are watching, um, or that will go back and re-watch, um, later on or something like that. But, um, I, I understand all of the, the situation, the circumstances and everything. And I'm, I'm really happy to hear that you, um, and see that you listened to public feedback in a different form and incorporated into the plans. So, um, uh, people of Avalon, I, I, I hope you're happy with this. And, um, like Lisa said, hopefully down the road, we'll be able to find, um, another space, you know, to expand on it when we can. But for the time being, you know, we're going to have a lot of different things going on, including the skate park. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. I just have a couple, uh, quick updates. Um, first, today, the Building Division Services RFP closed. Uh, we received a total of six proposals, which is fantastic. Um, we're hoping tentatively to schedule, uh, presentations next week and come back to City Council on November nineteenth. Um, some stats for the Household Hazardous Waste Bulky Item and E-Waste Event, uh, that was last month. Uh, we served a total of one hundred and twenty-four households, which is incredible. Um, we completely filled two extremely large roll-offs, plus had a pile off to the side for bulky item that resulted in one point five tons of, uh, of bulky item waste. Um, we collected two hundred and ten gallons of paint, a hundred and forty-seven, uh, items related to e-waste, forty-plus tires, um, eighty-eight containers, uh, for pesticide and cleaning supplies, a hundred and twenty batteries and more, a hundred and four light bulbs. Huge thank you to, um, Public Works, to Code, um, Admin, certainly CR and R, IDR and, uh, the Island Company for allowing us to use those roll-offs in the Field of Dreams. Um, we're already starting to plan a similar event in spring, um, because it was such a, a hit this time around. So thank you. Um, one more, uh, update, uh, we have our consultant, John Kinley, coming to town this month um, to conduct, uh, fats, oils and grease inspections for our food service establishments. Um, in addition, on Friday, November twenty-second, um, here in the council chamber, starting at eight fifteen, uh, we'll have the next round of vehicle hearings. And that'll be posted online and, and published in our paper shortly. Um, and then, uh, at the last council meeting, um, you all approved fees related to notary services. Um, so I just wanted to specifically give a little shout out to Carolyn Daly in the City Manager's Office, who will be providing those services and has that certification, so. And that's all I have.
Questions, comments?
Do we, do we have an update on our reverse vending machine?
Um, so reverse vending machine, I, um, am in talks with a environmental compliance officer with Albertson's Corporation, um, because they, uh, requirements with CalRecycle are changing starting January first. Um, and if there's any, uh, recycling center within a one-mile radius, um, uh, Vons will continue to be off the hook, so to speak. Um, so I don't want to implement a reverse vending machine too soon. Um, I'd much rather collaborate with Albertson's and Vons. Um, and maybe instead of one reverse vending machine, um, in the perfect world, we could have two or three, one of them being at Vons and, and other locations in the city. Um, so, uh, I, I have a good feeling about where talks are going. Um, there is a meeting, uh, today and I haven't had a chance to talk to Albertson's about it, to see how it went, but more to come on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
And I see where they put those strips in again where the, um, shopping carts can't get really off the property. I still see some, some people are just insistent and somehow still get them off the property. But, um, so that was nice that they followed up as per your request to get that implemented again.
Yeah.
Anything else for, for Jocelyn? No? Hey, do we have a city attorney?
I think so, but I, I mine.
What's that?
Yes, I do, but no report tonight, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. Okay, go, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, just, uh, a couple things that I haven't scratched off that I haven't already been addressed. First of all, um, just a quick update on the Burma Trail project. So the city, uh, took advantage with Arizona, uh, drilling and blasting while they were here, got their, and their equipment up at the top, uh, at the Burma Trail to shore up that retaining wall. They've done all their work, putting in their, uh, supports and, uh, borings. The city has taken over the remainder of that project at this point, which will be installing a guardrail at the top. And that project will be completed. So that was, uh, one that's been sitting on our CIP project that we were able to move up the list simply because of opportunity. So thanks to Bob Greenlaw and Public Works for pushing that up. Um, Jackie had mentioned, and I just want to thank the Island Company and the Conservancy and, uh, Jackie Cordero for putting together that collaborative effort. Um, I mean, I think it'll be a great showing of support over the next two days of all three entities working together, uh, to, to make sure the streets and sidewalks are cleaned and hopefully this is something we can build on in the future. Um, uh, getting things done. Um, everybody, or most people are aware of the tree removal back here on Tremont. It has made, um, quite the difference on that street, both day and night, you know, for, with the streetlights and the sunlight coming through there. Um, I certainly appreciate and respect anybody's concern with the removal of the trees. Um, but unfortunately, those trees were getting, uh, removed as part of the progress, which will be upcoming Five Corners project. But it has made quite a difference on that street already. And then as we move forward, getting rid of those K-rails and, and that street, I think, is going to have a significant, significant upgrade by the time that's done. Um, and then finally, I just want to briefly mention, uh, the selection of the voting location. Want to point out that this is not a city decision. Uh, the city doesn't play a role in this other than, you know, when the, uh, Board of Elections came over and did all their measurements and all their inspection over the summer. Um, they looked at City Hall, they looked at a number of different locations. They spent days over here making that determination, ultimately made the determination of having that at the trailhead. Um, I think that, um, there, there may be some limitations on the trailhead and they'll factor that in on their selection going forward in the future. But there are also some positives that I heard of having it at the trailhead. So we'll see how that plays out with the Board of Elections, if you, elections. But again, just for the public, just want to let them know, uh, let everybody know that's not our decision, it's, it's the board's. Um, any questions?
I, I just wanted to say, as a person who always comes and goes home right here, to be able to see that stop sign on the other side of the city driveway is amazing that you don't have that. Get to the intersection, find out that somebody's also, so you had.
Yeah, sightlines are much better.
The trees had to go away, but definitely open visually that intersection.
City Attorney, Scott?
I have nothing to report today. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all righty, oral communication. This is an opportunity to, for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. What I do. Oh, hell, I hear from you guys all the time. Okay, make us nappy.
I have nothing.
We have only got three minutes.
I have nothing either. We're good over here. Just two, two, easy, easy. One, I just wanted to say thank you for getting coast set up for election going today. I appreciate that. If we can do it for early voting and regular voting next time, that would be, I think, ideal if it ends up in the same place at least. Um, so we can just keep an eye on that for next election. And then second, um, this is more about getting ready. It's not about this, but it's a little bit about this. I was able to attend the stadium rally for the Dodgers winning the World Series. The event, uh-huh, yes, please, please feel free to applaud. The event was amazing, um, but more than anything, it was so cool to see the majority of Los Angeles, Long Beach, the whole region in support of one thing. I feel like we're, um, coming up to an event like that with the Olympics coming up as well. Um, so just want to kind of get the community excited about the Olympics. I don't know how many people are planning to go over and attend any of the torch bearing stuff. We're trying to see the opening ceremonies. I know it feels like it's several years away, but the last several years have gone by so fast that it's coming up quick. So anyway, um, just to say to get fired up about it, get to know who's on teams and what countries you want to follow and when the events are going to be, um, it's something I think that's really going to bring the region together. It was very cool to see tens of thousands of people utilizing metro services throughout LA. And then even when we got back into Long Beach, we stopped by the Yard House to have lunch afterwards. And seventy-five percent of the people in the restaurant were in Dodgers gear. There were random Dodger gear chants hap, like Dodger chants happening in the restaurant while we were eating. Like, it was good times. It was amazing. Anyway, so hopefully we can get to the point in a few years where we have some stuff happening here too, um, with the Olympics. I know that we're working on some of that as well. Um, but it's just, it was impressive to see the city come out for it. We ended up in a mini pseudo rally on the freeway when traffic was slowed down, where everyone rolled their windows down and started cheering and honking, putting their hats out the window, their flags out the window. So anyway, just be ready for it. It's going to be a lot of fun, I think. That's all.
Okay, that's good. I have skag on Thursday.
Oh, and cog tomorrow, sorry.
And she has cog tomorrow. And if any of you, um, attended the Day of the Dead celebration at the museum, it was absolutely incredible. It was packed to the gills, great food, the mariachi ladies were phenomenal. Um, anyway, so that was a good thing that I attended. Okay, oral communications.
Did you ask Mary Shaner?
Oh, Mary. Oh, Mary, God.
Just really quick, um, I attended a, a webinar on the, um, DDT barrels. Yeah, and Lisa was on the, the call as well. Um, it was, it's scary to, to listen to, um, but we've all known about its existence for quite some time. Um, it's, one of the good things I took away from it was that, uh, apparently a lot of it seems to be buried deep in the sediment of the ocean floor. So they said it would take a major disturbance to release it. But then again, there's little teeny weeny microscopic organisms that burrow down and then they go up and then fishies eat that and then fishies eat that and then, so. Um, but also I think you'd have to eat a whole ton to really feel the effects of it right now. But they did just get a lot of grant money and they were saying that, um, some of the, the research that they've already been doing, um, data will be available, um, in twenty-five, so that's not too long. And so I signed up to get more updates and all that kind of stuff. So it was interesting. Yay, the fifties.
There's a public website as well, so, um, we'll see if we can get that public website to the city to be able to post and share. Um, and it basically just contains a lot of info about what they're trying to do and even trying to figure out the scope of what the problem is. Um, but I think, to be fair, what the overarching discussion was, was that it's still safe to be in the ocean. It's still safe to consume the majority of seafood. And there is also a website to check on issues when there is a safety issue for consuming seafood. So, um, the fact that there are people keeping an eye on, on all of it for us is encouraging.
Definitely, definitely. And that's it.
My apologies. So oral communication, if you'd like to address the council. You have two minutes and no action will be taken.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, believe it or not, it's almost time for Shop Catalina. And in getting ready for that, we have, um, found ourselves with an amazing media opportunity to have a visit by NBC on, um, November nineteenth and twentieth for two days of filming leading up to promotions that would go live December fourth. That means I want it to begin looking a lot like Christmas earlier than usual because they will be helping us promote Shop Catalina and all the other winter activities. So this is just an, an open plea for everybody to find that garland, get those lights, decorate your store windows, even before the turkey decorations fully go away. So that is it for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So by November nineteenth and twentieth, huh?
Hello, Mayor and Council, how are you guys? I come tonight, I was going to speak on something else. Uh, I thought the skate park thing was on the agenda. So I'm actually coming to request that it gets put on the agenda as there's more factors involved, uh, than was presented. So I've been doing a lot of advocating for the skate park. I've had so many different businesses in town reach out, let me know they would, they're happy to donate money, put a little donation jar out there. I sent you guys the, um, the presentation with where I documented every single ramps. I documented the hardware involved, I documented the paint. I've had a local contractor contact me and tell me he would give, do all the labor for free. So that being said, seeing as it is Election Day and the community should have a say in what happens with the recreation of their kids, I think that that should be put on the agenda for later discussion and that the community can kind of have some kind of say or vote or poll as to what goes in there. I do appreciate what Dave's doing, trying to do the pocket park. I think that was awesome. That was a great idea. Uh, there was just some things, so his presentations put the, um, cost at seventeen thousand dollars to build the new multi-use facility and nowhere in there did it factor labor. And so I know the city workers don't work for free, they like to get paid. So once you factor labor in there, that turns the seventeen thousand dollars substantially higher than it was. So if you look at the presented, the presentation I gave you with a more accurate figure of the skate park, you can see that everything could be really reasonably done for under six thousand dollars. So I'm asking if Council reconsider putting the item on the agenda so we can discuss it and have a more open communication with the community. Being as the election day, I feel like it would be nice for the kids to kind of get a vote as to what goes in there. Thank you.
Your comments, okay?
What's she have to?
Hi. Hi, everybody. Uh, most of you know me, uh, Constance. Um, I'm also here to talk about the skate park, so, sorry. You guys are going to have an earful about that tonight. Um, to start off with, for those of you who know me, I have spent countless hours in the skate park, painting it, helping with it, throwing birthday parties there. My kids have been in there. I have two teenagers and a six-year-old. I have kids at my house constantly, house full of kids all the time, different ages, from different walks of life, different areas, some skateboarders, some not. Personally, I'm from, you know, the culture of skateboarding and from the culture of, you know, going out there and just, you know, hanging out, listening to music, all those things. I enjoy the skate park. I've enjoyed it, right, over the years. I've, I've, I've helped with it over the years. And for this, for me, it's not an issue about cost or money or, or what we're going to do with, how we should spend our money. Because either way, that money is going to kids programming, right? Whether it's through skating, whether it's through, uh, sports, things like that. And this has caused a big discussion in my house because if you know my husband, he helps with sports. He's up at the school with sports. He's here with sports at the city. He's downtown with these kids that are down there playing sports. He's constantly pulling in a lot of those teenagers that are running around downtown to play sports. I'm on the other side of that. I have helped with the skateboarders and those sides of those kids and helping with events like Halloween with Orby guns and things like, like, uh, it's caused a big discussion in my house. But what I'm, I'm getting at is I see the need for this multi-use facility above my emotional want for the skate park. Emotionally, and, and my friends and I, we want to have a skate park because that is our culture. But I see the need for having a multi-use facility. But I see the need for having a multi-use facility above that because it serves more people in the community, it pulls in more kids that don't skateboard, because we have a small section of kids here that skateboard, and I love them, and they're my people. But we also have this way bigger section of people, sorry, I know I'm running out of time, in the community that need a recreation facility, hundreds of people that go up to Joe Machado. And working at the city now, I see that need and working on the community facing, because our department works mostly with the youth. We are the youth program department in the city. So I just ask that you really trust us, that we know what we're doing with our programming and with our youth, so. And I also work at school, so I'm with them constantly. Like, I see that. So I'm just saying, like, I have a bigger scope of these kids than maybe others do. So anyway, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments as well. Anybody else? Okay, let's go to the consent calendar.
Okay, on the consent ca- On the consent calendar, item one, approval of the minutes from October 22nd, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Item two, approval of total expenditures for October 7th, 2024 through October 25th, 2024, totaling $1,983,048. Item three, authorize the purchase of a new Isuzu NRR utility truck with switch-and-go flatbed and dump bed system for the Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed $125,000. Item four, purchase of a pump for Pebley Beach Lift Station in some not to exceed $38,500 from the sewer fund. And item five, approval of a wet spot lease amendment. As set forth in there, they simply want to sublet a portion of their space, not additional space, but of the space they already control to Catalina Adventure Tours for ticket sales.
Council, do you want to pull any of these? If not-
I'm going to approve items one through five on consent.
Second?
Moved in second. No comments. Call for the vote.
Push it hard.
All eyes?
Okay, thank you. Item number six.
Item number six is a public hearing. It's a public hearing considering a conditional use permit variance, site plan, and coastal development permit to allow the demolition of a vacant three-story apartment building and construction of a new four-story hotel with employee housing in the special commercial zone. At this time, prior to Kelly speaking, we would ask council to, or after Kelly speaks, open the public hearing, receive public comment, close the public hearing, and then have a further discussion. And if that discussion leads you to approval, we would ask council to adopt the attached resolution if so approved. Kelly?
So you want me to open the public hearing first before she speaks?
Well, no, I just wanted to, you know, run through that criteria, but we do, you will need to open the public hearing. So Scott, I don't think there's a problem opening it before staff speaks. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'd open it now. So that her presentation is part of the public hearing.
Okay, opening the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the October 22nd, 2024 City Council Meeting, council did hold a public hearing to consider an appeal of the subject application for the Cameron Hotel and did vote 5-0 to see the matter as a de novo hearing, or new hearing this evening for approval of the project as described by the city manager. Because councils already had the chance to review all of the information in the public record related to the Planning Commission public hearing and review and recommendation of approval of that project, staff focused the staff report this evening on the issue items that came up for discussion amongst council during the appeal hearing last month. Issue number one was asking for a fully updated set of project plans that sort of reflected the conditions of approval that were put on the project by Planning Commission. So the applicant has prepared a revised set of plans that include the conditions provided by Planning Commission, including the requirement for a 14-foot rear setback. In the staff report, we've given you an updated site development standard table that kind of shows the breakdown on how the project as revised complies with the development standards for the special commercial zone. Things of note that changed between the Planning Commission review of the project and the revised version of the plans is that the lot coverage for the project has decreased from 97% to 85%. The floor area has decreased from 383% to 348%. And the rear setback to the building wall has increased to 14 feet. There would be a 10-foot setback from the staircase on the back of the building that goes down to the ground floor, so that's not at the back of the building, just down. And below grade, the ground floor would have a three-foot setback to the rear property, which is the minimum for the zoning district. The applicant has also updated the floor plan for all of the hotel rooms to also take into account the reduction in the size of the building. And all of the hotel rooms comply with the minimum size standards in the code, which is 190 square foot total and requiring at least 35 square feet of that room size to be a bathroom. The applicant also updated their phasing plan for the project since they only have a water allocation at this time for up to 10 kind of bedrooms or water units. So rooms would be constructed on the ground floor and the second floor with that initial allocation, with the balance of the interior being developed once additional allocation is received. Item number two was discussion of parking and loading zones. So the applicant is proposing to provide one onsite vehicle parking space that would fit either a full-sized vehicle or autowet with the balance in the rear area, so in the rear setback area that's been created with the additional setback. The balance of that area would be used for kind of outdoor space for the employees of the hotel who will be living on site. They are proposing to retain a portion of an existing loading zone on Metropole Avenue next to the building, which will decrease in size because of the curb cut for the parking space, and to create a new 20-foot-long, three-minute loading zone at the front of the building on Beacon Street. City council had discussed at the meeting whether it would make more sense to relocate those loading zones to perhaps a different part of the street, perhaps across Beacon Street, or to utilize an existing loading zone in front of the St. Lauren Hotel. Staff doesn't really recommend either of those options primarily due to accessibility concerns. Because of the slope in that area across Beacon Street, it would be very difficult for folks who either have mobility aids or need some other assistance to get across the street because of the slope. The applicant, council had also discussed the possibility of utilizing that new rear yard area for parking, additional parking, not just for one vehicle. So the applicant has provided sort of a, provided a alternative off-street parking plan, but does note that their preference would be for the one off-street parking space with the employee recreation area instead. Issue item number three was use of the rooftop deck. Council had asked for clarification on the intended operations of that deck since it was unclear based on the staff report and testimony from the applicant previously. The applicant has prepared an updated project description and had clarified that the rooftop deck would be used for guests of the hotel only during regular operations. As far as what types of services would be provided, food and beverage would only be prepackaged, kind of continental breakfast-style food service at this time, and that they would have to come back for a conditional use permit for the addition of alcohol or additional services in the future. The applicant does want to be able to offer the rooftop deck for special events. And staff has carried over conditions from the Planning Commission approval of the project that would set hours of operation, require hotel staff to be present on the deck for any kind of food or beverage service. The deck can only be used for guests unless there's a special event permit approved. And that special event permit would be required for anything beyond hotel guest use of the deck. Issue item number four was kind of some clarification regarding the employee housing requirements and what will be provided. So the applicant is obligated as part of the municipal code to provide 50% of their peak season employees' housing. Now, that can be housing on-site or elsewhere. In this case, they have stated that they expect to have four employees, full-time employees for the hotel, which would obligate them to provide a minimum of two housing units. The original version of the plan had four studio-style hotel employee units. As part of the revised plan and based on some of the discussion at the Planning Commission or City Council hearing, the applicant has revised that to have one manager suite, which is a studio-style unit, and two two-bedroom apartments on the ground floor of the building, which does satisfy their code-required housing based on the number of employees they're stating that they will have. In addition to that, they are also providing with three, what they call transient workforce units, on the ground floor of the building. These are, they're classified as hotels, which would require payment of TOT, and they are provided, required, are going to provide the same types of amenities to these rooms like they do any of the other hotels in terms of housekeeping and things of that nature. And those units are also on the ground floor. They do not count towards their employee housing requirement, but they have been set aside specifically to kind of serve, in particular, the applicant's construction employees who are here on a weekly basis. And those units do meet the minimum size and amenity requirements for a hotel room in the municipal code. Staff has provided, as city manager mentioned, an updated draft resolution with a recommendation of approval for the project with the conditions and the findings for the conditional use permit, site plan, variances, and coastal development permit. I'm here for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Well, let's go to public comment. Anybody from the public want to comment?
Do I get two minutes? Only two minutes. Okay, can I borrow?
It's three on an agenda, I know.
Three minutes.
Three? Okay. And can I borrow if I go over?
Well, and then maybe somebody else can carry on.
I'm sorry?
Maybe Tom can carry on or somebody else.
Well, they have things to say as well.
What's that?
They have things that they're going to come up and talk as well, so I don't know if I can borrow their-
Let's see how it goes, Tina.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tina Conover-Hayden. I am a property owner at 310 Metropole, which is directly adjacent to the Cameron Hotel project. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I appreciate your consideration. I'm really nervous. I emailed you a letter with an attachment regarding this project, and I don't know if Yessenia received it because I, oh, you did. Okay, good. Got something back on it. But, so, my concern with this is at the first and only Planning Commission meeting, the following condition was approved that was proposed, discussed, voted on, and filed on 9/16 with the city as it relates to the 14-foot setback from the Conover House property line to the new Cameron Hotel building. It was under Exhibit B, conditions of approval, and it was number 25. And it stated, "The site plan and architectural plan shall be modified to provide a minimum rear setback of 14 feet between the building and the shared property line with 310 Metropole Avenue to the south of the project site." It was filed on the 16th of April, stamped filed. When we went through the process again, the, was heard and the, I'm sorry, the conditions of approval that were filed on 11/1 for this meeting stated it was under number three. It was, "The site plan and architectural plan shall provide a minimum rear setback of 14 feet between the building and the shared property line with 310 Metropole to the south of the project site." When the plans were filed again, because there was a problem with the plans, it was filed as, "The site plan and architectural plans shall provide a minimum rear setback of 14 feet above grade between the building and the shared property line with 310 Metropole Avenue to the south of the project site." So there's been a change to the conditions that were not approved of. There was never discussion about above grade. And so when we got the new plans for this meeting, and it was, they were delivered yesterday at 4:42 PM, they show that there's this change on above grade. And if you look at the, the ground floor plans, they show that the property is built completely out to our property line, well, with a three-foot setback. So the first floor on the ground floor plans is completely encroaching on the setback. It's my understanding that a setback is determined by the property line to the edge of the building. And it doesn't distinguish between above ground or below ground. There's a setback, and that was what was approved by the Planning Commission. And I don't quite understand why they can take a ground floor and build it out all the way when there's a setback. So that was my first concern. I'm so sorry. So, issue one, for the updated project plans, it has Table 1 for the development. So I don't know if you have that in front of you, but Table 1 shows that, and Kelly talked about, the change in the lot coverage shows 85%. If you have a ground floor that is built out to the three-foot setback of the building, it is not 85%. It's 97%. It's back to the original lot coverage. So the setback is completely gone. It might be on the second floor to the back of the building, but it is not on the ground floor. They want to build out the ground floor all the way to the property line with a three-foot setback, and they want to build it down and in. Also, with the previous plans, the air conditioners were going to be where it is shown on the roof. The air conditioners were going to be where now it shows that there's storage area. However, in the more recent plans that have been presented, now the HVAC units are on top of the building that is on top of the roof, where the bathrooms and the kitchen part is. And it seems on the plans that now it has been extended, so it's a higher elevation, which is one of the problems that people have had with the height of the building. And now there's an additional on top of that that equals more than what I believe was allowed. So they've added the air conditioners too. There's so many things with this particular project, but main concerns were with the setback. And we believe that a setback is a setback, whether it's above ground or below ground, and that we, the encroachment onto the setback of now the employee area, which doesn't even talk about what is going to be that employee area, if it's going to be built out, grassy area, picnic tables, barbecues, I don't know, for the employees. If that's on the 14-foot setback, is that an encroachment if they have anything on it? And then the trash receptacle is encroaching on the setback as well on the second floor. So I would appreciate consideration of all of the factors that I've talked about. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we're all making little notes to try to get clarif- I think we're all trying to make notes to try to get clarification from either Kelly or Mr. Flynn, one or the other, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, how did I follow that? Okay. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council. My name is Tom Conover. My- My name is Tom Conover, and my family has owned the property at 310 Metropole since 1965. As you will notice, a lot of my stuff that I'm presenting tonight is stuff that I've said at the last City Council meeting, and then as well as at the Planning Commission. But I've spoken before, all three, and I still have a concern about this project that is taking place at 301 Beacon. It's my opinion that this project, located at the end of a residential street, is too big. All you have to do is go look through the numbers, and you'll see that we're going from 80% building to lot size to what was a 97%, which was then backed off with the 14-foot setback, to 85, and now we're built back out to 97 again. So I have a couple of issues with how information has been passed along about getting the new plans at almost 5 o'clock last night, and then finding this new stuff in it. So I think that we need to be really careful about looking at this particular project. It's not only going to affect my property, but all the people up the hill, up on Metropole. It'll create noise and congestion, and upon receiving the updated plans at 5:00 PM last evening, noticed about the 14-foot setback, which extremely concerns me because with this, the property line is five feet from my front door. Okay, so a three-foot setback, if they excavate down from that, I'm concerned that things on my property are going to shift. And, so I'm concerned. I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about across the street, when the St. Laurent went up, when they excavated down, they happened to hit hard rock. They weren't able to dig down any further, and so then they started building up from there. That is why the St. Laurent is as tall as it is. Is the same thing going to happen here? So I'm concerned about all of these things and how they pertain. Most of this stuff is going on behind me, because I, everything's above me anyway. But the people behind me and up the street are going to be graced with this forever. I received, okay, the City Council, oh, what I recommend. I recommend the City Council reject all variances requests until a more reasonable project can present, be presented. I believe when this building, when the building codes were put in place, they were put there for a reason, and it was because probably some for fire, some for, you know, keeping space between buildings, and also keeping a quaint little town. Each step along the way, each variance that you are allowing takes another thing away from people on Metropole, whether that be noise reduction or, or view to the, to the harbor of the casino. I know we were talking about, there's no assurance about visibility, but those things are going to be taken away. So every time that you add another variance, you're taking one more step down from your nice quaint little town. And when a project like this comes to a lot next to you, I want you to remember this meeting where you have the ability to, I don't want to stop what's going on, because I think that a project needs to be done at that site. I think it should be apartment buildings myself, but using the same footprint of what is already there. But not to stop, but reconsider this particular project, and do not allow variances. Thank you.
Your comments. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I start, I'm probably going to need about five minutes. How do I go about borrowing minutes?
Oh, what the heck. Go on.
All right. Thank you. My name is Phil Dockery. I live in Redlands, California. I lived in Avalon in the past. My family owned a house here from the early 50s through the mid 70s. I worked here through my 20s up until into my 50s. So I have a long history here and a lot of concern about the town, and a lot of passionate, passionate love for this town as well. The first thing I would like to do is read a letter on behalf of Diane Conover, and then I would like to make a few comments of my own. Diane would like you, wanted me to read you this. Good evening, Mayor Marshall, City Council members, and City of Avalon staff. Up until the events of this last week, we've been willing to play ball and still attempt to maintain our peaceful enjoyment of our adjacent home at 310 Metropole. Yes, agreed, the current building needs to go. Okay, we can live with a hotel as opposed to the apartments previously occupying the space. No, we don't think a fifth-floor rooftop gathering space with food and beverage sales was appropriate, and we appreciate its removal. Thank you. But seriously, trying to burrow under the lot to warehouse staff in an underground bunker in quarters that lack windows for light and air? I'm getting claustrophobic just looking at this disaster. Please don't be drawn in by Mr. Flynn's assertion that he's working to alleviate the housing issues here. All the documents list both employee housing, beds, and what he refers to as workforce housing. Workforce housing should not be confused with or lumped in with the required staff housing. These are two very different issues. Workforce or short-term transient housing implies the tenant has off-island accommodations as their permanent housing. City code only requires he provide a housing for 50% of his hotel staff at a minimum. With that said, I am of the belief that Mr. Flynn has grossly underestimated the number of staff required to operate and by city requirements to be domiciled. Industry recommendations suggest that for every 10 rooms in a three-star hotel, the maximum number of staff needed is eight. In a four-star hotel, the suggestion is 12, and in a five-star hotel, 20. I took a very unscientific poll of some local hotels to see just what staffing will be required for this project. I simply asked several hotels and asked whomever answered the phone just two questions. First, how many rooms they had, and how many people worked there in the high season. All could answer the first question. The second question was more difficult for most, and a few declined to answer at all, which was totally understandable. My results, Hotel A has 15 rooms, and they have 10 staff. Hotel B has 19 rooms, and they have 10 staff. Hotel C has 44 rooms with 14 staff. Hotel D has 96 rooms with 26 staff. This facility utilizes an off-island reservation center. 174 rooms with 60 staff averages to .35 staff per room, which would be 14. This would include front desk reservations, housekeeping, maintenance, and the required deck attendant. In no way will Mr. Flynn operate a hotel of this size with eight staff, much less before he's proposing. The transient workforce rooms are at his discretion and are solely for his benefit, and should not be taken into consideration when determining housing compliance. Thank you, Diane Conover, 310 Metropole. By the way, I also lived at 310 Metropole in the early 80s, so I'm quite familiar with the place. Of my own comments, I was concerned about a lot of the things that the Conovers have just now spoken about, and including the, the size of the structure. Yeah, sure, we'll actually, there, do that first. Mainly the size of the structure and its impact on the, the local neighborhood right there, but also the aesthetics of the structure. Personally, I spent most of my career, my working career, building architectural models and designing educational exhibits and museum exhibits, including here on the island. I did work for the Catalina Island Museum back when they were still at the casino with Patricia Moore and under Stacy Addy. I did a lot of work for the Conservancy up at the airport in the sky, and at the Conservancy House, and for the Island Company as well. I also worked for Disney for 10 years in one of their art departments, where we worked for projects on Disneyland Park, as well as working with the artists and designers and Imagineering. So I know, I know a little bit about design and, and that sort of things. What I wanted to do, and what I built here, is a rather simplified model. It's a massing model, and as its name implies, the idea is to look at the size and shapes of structures as they compare to other things around it. There's no real detail involved, because it's just to give you an idea of the mass and how the massing works. So this is the Conover House, a simple, simplified model of it, and the current White House Apartments, the three-story building that's there, as you can see. To scale, this is the new building. You can see, it's pretty dramatic. Over the last couple of days, there were a couple of two-by-four posts that were placed in opposite corners of the existing building to try to give an idea of how big it was going to be. It's one thing to look at a basically one-dimensional line going up into the sky and trying to come to a, a good mental understanding of what you're looking at and what it represents. This gives you a much, much better idea of what the scale of it actually is. As you can see, for other references, this is a community church. The Hotel St. Laurent is right here. If you want to, can he bring this up?
No, but I see it perfectly from here, but.
Oh.
The closer you get, the harder it is for me to see.
All right. One of the other things I wanted to mention ties in with what Tom brought up, and it's that the decisions that are made here at the council, at the council, City Council meeting, and at the Planning Commission meetings, aren't just decisions for the day. They're not decisions for tonight, or, you know, the next couple of years, or even for just a project. They're decisions, they're generational decisions. When you make a decision to approve a project like this, it's going to impact the future of Avalon. It's going to impact the community as a whole. It's going to impact the, the character of the town, what draws people to it, and it's going to last for decades and decades and decades. So when you make these decisions, you have to, really need to look at it, and look at the illustrations. I was really struck by the illustrations, and how unlike, even though it said in the proposal, the, the, that I read, that it was, was designed to complement the surrounding architecture. This lot is directly across the street, across, right across Beacon, directly across from it, is an authentic Victorian-era church. Across the street from it on Metropole is a authentically detailed Victorian-style hotel. The building that you have seen illustrations of doesn't look even remotely like, like those buildings. It doesn't have the charm or the warmth. It doesn't have the character that represents Avalon, and that's the kind of things that you really, really should be looking at and considering, because this represents, this represents the town. It represents the townspeople, it represents us, everyone who loves the island. It looks more like a medical office building in Irvine. It doesn't have the charm and the warmth, the invitation. You look at a structure, it should look like it's welcoming you with open arms, not asking you for your medical ID. One of the other things I was very concerned about, and which they've also brought up, but I really wanted to mention it just for a moment, and it was the, the housing situation and the, the underground bonkers of, of this building. These rooms, some of these rooms have either tiny, tiny little windows because of where they're located on the street side, and in fact, the ones on the street side, that's where the, the underground setback is. So they're, they have no view, they have no natural light, they have no fresh air. I'm, my concern for that is, how humane is that? You have workers that are vital to the success of this building, but then they're shuffled underground like some science fiction dystopian story. What does that do to their, their mental health? I mean, these are, it's not going to affect us, but it's certainly going to affect them when they work all day long and then they go down into the basement of, with no windows, no view, no nothing.
What other points do you have, sir?
That's it. That was it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's nice that you have such a history with Catalina and Avalon.
Yes, I plan on keeping that going. Thanks.
Any other, any, I see a couple other people in the audience. Are you going to want to come up and say anything? Okay. Okay, just checking. Okay. All right. Do we have questions for Kelly based on a couple of comments that were made at the beginning? For example, that ground floor setback, I'm not, okay, they talked about ground floor setback. We talked about 97% of lot coverage. They talked about the air conditioning, da-da-da-da-da, and then the employee area encroachment, if they use that 14 feet.
Sure. So I'll specifically address the things that are related to development standards, and then maybe some of the other questions would probably be better for the applicant.
Okay.
So regarding the required setbacks for the property. So the property is zoned special commercial, and the special commercial zone, the minimum required rear setback is three feet. Planning Commission, as part of their decision, you know, as part of the discussion that happened kind of during the course of the public hearing, had placed a condition on the project that said that they would like to see a minimum 14-foot rear setback. That is a condition. That was, that is not a development standard in the code. So technically, the applicant has provided a 14-foot setback for the building above grade and 10-foot below grade, and that is allowable via the code. There's no variance required for that. And since this is a de novo hearing, a new public hearing, it is really up to the Council to decide if you would like to continue to require the rear 14-feet setback from that property line as a condition of approval. It is not a requirement of code to do that, so I just wanted to clarify that. So the plan as proposed does meet the setback standards for the zoning district, but it is correct to say that it is different, perhaps, than might have, Planning Commission may have been envisioning when they placed the condition on the project. I can't speak for that specifically. Regarding lot coverage, so the municipal code does not have a definition for lot coverage, so we have to default to kind of the general understanding of what lot coverage is. Lot coverage is a kind of a horizontal measurement that's meant to control for mass and scale of buildings that are built on lots. It's not a vertical measurement, for instance, like height, or floor area also takes into consideration all floors of a building. So lot coverage is calculated essentially based on the grade level of the building. So that's where the 85% comes from, because the portion of the building that you're talking about that goes to three feet is below grade. So that's not mass or skip, mass that's visible above ground, that doesn't affect the visuality of what you're seeing above ground, which is what lot coverage is meant to control.
So 85% still exists? It's not 97?
That, that is the reason that 85 is listed. If we were looking below grade at the maximum extent of the building, then yes, 97% would be more or less what it is. But that is why staff put 85% in the staff report, because that's what's going to be visible as a footprint above ground. And the only other thing I specifically wanted to touch on was kind of architectural style. So specifically, the municipal code actually, finding number three for site plan, says that we cannot dictate a particular architectural style for buildings. So I just wanted to put out there that that's something that staff can generally not make specific comment on in recommendations, though it's certainly something that Planning Commission or Council can consider. And then also, there was mention of kind of the historic building across the street. The church is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. However, City Babylon doesn't have any historic preservation ordinance or design standards, again, that dictate architectural style or compatibility. I'm very familiar with those standards, other places I work, but we don't have them here. So those are just specific development standard-related criteria I wanted to clarify. I think some of the other things related to excavation or design intent are probably better for the applicant to discuss.
Does anybody have any more questions of Kelly right at this moment?
I think mine pertain more to Mike, probably, just on this couple of projects, so.
Okay. Any questions right now of Kelly? You're good? Okay, Mr. Flynn? And I don't know if it's me, I have a hard time understanding Kelly. Are you okay?
Yeah, the mask.
The mask really muffles it.
The mask, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I, I understand you wearing it, but it's. Yeah, I understand you're wearing it, but it really is...
I have the same problem with Jim.
Yeah.
You know, the acoustics in here are tough, because you guys are like in a box, so it gets muffled, and it's hard to hear the details. So I think we all need to speak directly to the microphone, maybe that helps.
As another reminder, yes.
Madam Mayor and Council, good evening. A couple things. When we left the last time, we talked about city council, or I'm sorry, planning commission had approved a project unanimously, and it was throughout this whole process, people have, "We want to do this, and two of these, and three of those, and move this over and do all this stuff." So what happens is when you do that, and the language that goes along with the approval of the project, you don't see it on the actual plans. Plans aren't reflective of that, because you're talking about it and you're approving it based on those things. So what we've done in this last two weeks is taken all those things that were approved and put it into a new set of plans. So you have a set of plans today that will be built as per those plans, based on planning commission or whatever else you add to it tonight. The parking space, it's perplexing to me, but the Conover's, we have a three-foot setback by zoning, and we have a 28-foot height limit by zoning. So all of those things, we're living within the zoning of what we're doing. I, the Conover's, had a problem and a concern over the darkness that they felt that they might have by a building being too close to them. So what I did is I offered it, instead of three feet, to move that building at grade back to 14 feet, which gave them, plus their five feet, 19 feet from our building to their building. And the only proviso that would be in that was a four-foot emergency access stairway that went all the way to the roof on top of the building, or on the front of the building. The more I looked at it, the uglier it was in the building. So what we did is we sacrificed a four-foot stairway inside the building, except for the one that was going down to the basement. So now, other than a 42-inch rail, and possibly a five- or six-foot fence or wall that goes around the dumpsters, we have clear 14 feet all the way to their building, 19 feet to theirs, from ours. Not three, not five, but 19. So it costs us in the building, six hotel rooms, to be able to accomplish that. We have never had a discussion, what you do as far as a basement below that. I don't have an easement for 14 feet in the building per any code. I have a 14-foot that I've offered to take care of somebody's concerns by placing the building back, and that's what I've done. Below that, those rooms have windows. And now, if you think that they're a dungeon and you think they're inhabitable, I think the ground floor of the senior housing probably falls in the same category. Maybe somebody ought to talk to those folks and see how they like, you know, like living there or not. But we have an open breezeway between the outside wall on Metropole and where the units would be. So that's open air. And if you look at those units, they have doors and windows. And so it's, to me, is very inhabitable, and I don't see a problem with it at all.
Oh, can I, because I'm not good at envisioning things, but so you're, you've been to the Belanca Hotel, right?
Say it again.
You've been to the Belanca Hotel, correct?
Yeah, a while back.
It's the old BP.
Yeah, a while back.
So the restaurant was built out to the sidewalk, and then they did what I think you're talking about doing here, is they put hotel rooms there. So the street goes up like this, but the hotel rooms go straight, and there is a little area in between the street and the room, so they actually have sliding glass doors and patios. But you're not going to go that far, but they, so you're saying they will have light, even though...
Yeah, let me show you on the plan real quick. I'll just point to it, and you might will see it.
Those are, I'm talking back here. I'm talking the bathroom.
This portion of it has windows, because the street is angling up and going from below.
Right?
So these have actual windows in them to have a lot of light.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to tell you to get back to the microphone, so, I'm sorry.
Okay. So this portion of the building, when you see it as it ascends up Metropole, the street is rising, so back here, there are no windows. When you get to about this point, we're at almost a grade, we're within a couple of feet of grade. So what we did is we set, we have our outside retaining wall that goes next to the sidewalk on Metropole, and then we have a four-foot setback before we get to a building. So this is just open-air breezeway. This'll just have like natural air. This is a door here, and this would be considered all outside.
And so that's going to go all the way to the three-foot setback line?
To here.
And that's, at the end of that, is the three-foot?
This whole area is an open breezeway. Yeah.
So that's all, that's all open? That's all open?
Okay.
So you will, you will have, you will have natural air and natural light in that breezeway.
Right.
And then inside, it'll be a four-foot setback.
Right.
Window casings for that and for the setback.
Now, the 14 feet that we've talked about underground only affects the workforce housing. And I've heard a couple mentioned, a couple of times it's mentioned, or at least once it was mentioned, that the workforce housing is for my benefit. Workforce housing is not for my benefit. I'm one of the ones that's going to benefit from it, because I get to rent the rooms. But we don't have any rooms. That's the whole reason employ for doing this. So what you're sacrificing here, which would be eliminating if we don't allow that 14-feet underground underneath the driveway and the parking structure and the greenbelt, which the Conover's would never see in a million years, won't even know that they're there, what would happen is you'd lose that workforce housing. That's your call. If you want it, if you don't need it, I disagree with you. I think we do need it, and I think we need it desperately. So we have to come up with creative solutions to be able to accomplish that. These people are here for a day, or two, or three, they're not here for weeks on end, and they're not living there year-round. It's a hotel spot for them to stay in. And I have a situation that they're staying in right now, currently, is very similar to this, up at El Dorado. So, and it's perfectly acceptable, so.
I spoke, I spoke to a builder today, and he was at the last meeting, and he was very pleased with what you did with the workforce housing and those, and those other units, those units that you're doing for the employees. He says, "Those are great."
Well, after Dave talked about it, we went back and we did the plan, and we thought, "Okay, how do we make this better?" I mean, I'm not here to force anything down anybody's throat, I just, okay, and I listen and I hear. So what I hear is, we put, we put full kitchens in all those units. They're not the little kitchenettes, because I could detect that that was not really something you guys liked. So what we did is we put full kitchens in, they have a common room, each one has a full bedroom and its own bathroom. So, I mean, they're nice units, so.
Go ahead, Lisa, do you have some questions?
I just wanted to confirm on the 28-foot height, the casings for the air-conditioned HVAC upstairs. So the 28-foot height goes to the edge of the surround that goes around the space?
Correct.
You'll still have clear...
Glass on top.
Glass on top of that to be able to block sound.
Correct.
And then the overall height, I was trying to just do the math on, I think it goes up to the same height as the elevator mechanical section, so that's...
It's 10 feet above that parapet wall.
Okay.
And it's the, the size and the height is because of the ADA requirements that we have to have in order to be able to get an elevator up there. And the same thing with the building that's there. I have two bathrooms that I think are seven by five in order to meet the ADA requirements. So, I mean, it takes up a good third of that structure. And if I could point out on another plan...
And then I do want to say while you're getting that, I do appreciate you putting the story poles back up. I know they had to come down because of the wind event, but I do appreciate you doing that so we could see this scope and size. I think the neighbors also appreciated that, at least being able to see that.
I'm trying. This gives you a cross-section of the building?
Yeah.
And you have, I think you've seen that, if you look at the, this has a mansion, oops, this has a mansion that goes all the way around that upper building, and the same thing on the elevator. Now, if it doesn't have to be this high, we can shorten it, we'll shorten it. But I have to have at least two and a half, three feet of hollow space underneath it to put those air handlers in them, otherwise you will hear them. So if I put them back here on the back, I mean, I got to put them somewhere, they got to have air conditioning in the units. If I put them back here, it's going to be far more noisy than it will be 60 feet, 40 feet away from where the Conover's are. And remember, I've got people living or staying in the hotel below. I don't want it noisy for them either. So you guys have all seen how I build. We build very stout, so we'll put in all kinds of buffers here to make sure that that noise, nobody hears. So, so anyway, that's where they go.
I think the two bigger questions I have, one, and this might be a Kelly question, or it might be a Mike question, one is, are the workforce housing units and onsite housing units in a covenant to remain that even after the closure of the lease in 50 years? Is that something that is required or we can require? And then two, and this might be a question for Mike and maybe even for Kurt as well, to ask the question, because we've been asked it ourselves, is it something that if you were willing to do first, second, third floor, and then rooftop deck and not have a fourth floor? Is that an option? Is that something you'd be willing to consider?
Well, first of all, we're entitled to go 28 feet. And the 28 feet is four floors. If you dig down, it's partial, part of it being in a basement. So, and to have, remember here, we've started off with 36 hotel rooms?
Yeah.
I'm down to 29 now, and I have 13 workforce or employee housings. A third of the project is for something other than a hotel. So if we need the housing, which I keep hearing everybody saying we need the housing, and I agree, we do, we have to come up with some creative methods to be able to do that, otherwise you're dependent on outside sources to be able to build them, and it's not happening, so.
And then a question on...
The one other question you asked, though, about the length of time that the workforce housing would be in place?
Yeah.
Right now, we have a full 30-year lease with options. So I think it's the intention, and I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I don't think that Kurt and the family want to be in the hotel business. But after 30 years, if I establish a good, solid business, and it's running well, and it's good in the community, and we're going to continue on that relationship. So I would say we have a 50-year relationship. What happens after that? I'm not going to be here probably to the 30, so you'll be dealing with my son at that time, but hopefully that's what, that we'll be dealing with, so.
So then, let me ask the question, and I don't know if it was answered, I apologize. So in 30 years, when you're not maybe there, is there a covenant that, that workforce housing, it still is maintained as workforce housing? Is that your question?
I would say that somebody would have to propose something different, but...
Okay.
Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Let's give it a try.
Yeah, apologies. So Section 911, 104D of the municipal code, is the section that requires, has that provision for commercial project properties to provide 50% peak season employees' housing? That can be on property or off property. It is not a requirement of where it has to be, it's just that it needs to be provided, and that the city, it has to be provided for rentals have to be at least a period of no less than six months. And that has to be done subject to, you know, review, compliance audit with the city. So there is no requirement in that section that when workforce, when employee housing units are created, that they have to be deed restricted, or there's a covenant, by code. That would have to be, if that is something council wants to consider, I would definitely defer you to Scott to discuss what the options would be in terms of if the council wanted to consider a restriction of that nature, because that's a little bit beyond planning, that's more of a legal question.
I just wanted to, if I could, I had my hand raised up, to be on that point. What our municipal code and the condition of approval number 25 provides is that they have to provide, based upon their estimate of four employees, they have to provide at least half of that number of workforce housing. Now, if there are more employees, as indicated by some of the speakers tonight, we do do an audit every year, and if there, if they have more peak employees, they're going to have to provide that housing either on that location, or provide rental housing elsewhere. And that is a condition that is, again, created by the municipal code, that is independent of the conditions of approval. The only way that goes away is that the council were to eliminate that provision of the municipal code. So that's going to apply regardless.
Okay, but then you said provide other rental housing, but is that going to compete with the regular town like the conservancy does in the hospital by going out and renting a bunch of units, and it really doesn't, you know, doesn't, there's no additional workforce housing, it's just taking existing? So, but you're saying we can't go out and say, "Okay, well, now you doubled your workforce, and now you need to build," or buy...
Yeah, but I, you're, I mean, it's because as you provide rental housing for 50% of your peak employees.
Yeah, so it's competing with what we already are competing with, though, because it's not new housing.
Well, this is new housing.
Correct.
If he keeps it outside, that's what I'm saying is...
But I mean, I think that the point about maybe needing additional staff is probably a valid statement. So if he needs eight more people, and then we say, "Whoops, well, we did your audit, you got eight more people, really? Now you got to provide housing." Well, then he just goes out and rents housing that's already existing, which is taking it from somebody else. Or it's not adding to the housing stock.
The housing stock, right.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, that's, I think, why I was asking about the possibility of a covenant to require that those remain workforce housing, so that it would be set that way. But I don't know if there's an appetite.
You could add that as, I mean, you're already requiring him to provide, to comply with the municipal code. I think staff's view is you could require that, that since, since he's building it for this, that you can require that those units that are entitled right now will continue to be workforce housing.
Okay, and I just have another question of Mike. So let's say you don't have as much work and you don't need as many employees, and you see that happening for a while. Can you some kind of sublet them to somebody else who might be needing workforce housing?
Yes. The answer, what we did is when we did this, there's not just myself. You have special events in the summertime, you have things on the weekends. My employees are here Monday through Thursday, and they leave. So that leaves Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They're available for the same type of operation to anybody else in town.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not just for me, it's for me part of the time.
Yeah.
But the other part of the time, no, I think it's a huge benefit to have it available to others.
So you only have eight guys on your crew?
No, but the other crews come and go, and some of them are only here by days. I mean, we end up running 30 guys most of the time, but they stay at, I rent a hotel. I don't, I, what I am going to do, and I promise you, is that two houses that we're renting, they're going to move out of that and move into this. And so that affords those two houses to be opened back up to the general public. So, I mean, that's, the whole thing kind of is a trickle-down effect, you know, with the different ways that people are using, but those two rooms that we, or two houses, apartments that we already have will go back. And in the future, if, if it turns out that we need more housing, I mean, Michael can speak to this, as you run and operate a hotel, it's hard to get staff if you can't provide them housing, because housing here is so expensive. So you have to provide them housing some way. So we may come back and say, "Okay, we have to remodel a hotel room and turn it into another workforce housing unit," or maybe one other, or employee housing unit, or we may have to go back to the workforce housing and say, "Hey, we have to adjust this or remodel this to be able to provide for more employee housing." But the pool is set up to be able to use for that sector of, you know, a clientele. So you got to provide that housing for them.
Well, to Michael's point, this had a lot of scrutiny by the planning commission, and seven to zero, they approved the plan, and I can appreciate the appeal, but I don't know why, back then, all of y'all didn't all come forward with all of these concerns and thoughts, it's just now coming out because of a small appeal by, not small appeal, but the appeal for just limited things, and now you want, wanting to kind of expand it out to not build it at all, or build just apartments. So we're kind of going all over the place. So, council, if you have questions or comments?
You need to close this.
I know, I was just going to say, now, I was going to do that, Michael, I really was. Did you see me reaching for my gavel?
Yeah.
Okay. There's no further comments, I'm going to close the public carry. Okay. Pleasure. Final project qualifies for streamlined... Find the project qualifies for streamlined review, blah, 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 blah. Adopt the findings, support the approval.
I don't know, that model, that model spoke volumes to me. I don't know, because I've been, I've been sitting at home on my computer with pictures of the new building and pictures of the old building, and trying to superimpose, but they're not at the same angle and all that kind of stuff. Because I was, like I said earlier, I failed the SATs when you had to fold the shapes, and it was right next to the staple, you know? So I don't have that spatial perception. So I was trying to figure that out. And, and as I think the engine, the Imagineer pointed out, you know, a pole sticking up in the air, it's really hard to, you know.
My, my issue with the model is that it's just that and the houses behind it. There should have been a model of the St. Laurent, there should have been a model of the church, so you get the whole visual of what that does look like. Just having that one building in front, to me, isn't a fair, fair showing of what that corner looks like. If, if you're going to use that as the example, then you should have taken into account and put in those other larger-
Well, he does have pictures of, you know, to scale.
Yeah, but you're looking at, you said you were looking at the model, and when they put it over the-
Yeah, yeah.
But, but here, you know that there's a hotel here, but you don't have that perception of what it looked like on the model. Same thing with the church across the street, you know? And, and the other thing is that, as Kelly said, we don't have an architectural review as to what the buildings are supposed to look like. So I-
Well, that's one thing I told Mike, anyway. I thought the design of it is beautiful. I think it's really nice, and it looks, and, and you're right, there's Victorian on the side and across the street, exactly. But what is existing is not Victorian. And it actually echoes what is existing, but in a nicer fashion, in my opinion. So, but, so that's the design standard neither here nor there. It's just, it's gigantic. Well, I don't know. Just a comment.
I think the challenge I have is that even with the building, the main part of the building being at the right height, the centerpiece and the over for the elevator is where I find challenges that exceed the height. And a part of me was talking about, you know, looking at the architecture of the building. Having worked in hotels, I appreciate the fact that your hotel actually does not have balconies. It's much more common and standard now to not build hotels with balconies for a number of reasons: safety, noise. And so in that aspect, it's going to look different than what the St. Laurent looks like. I do appreciate the way that the St. Laurent steps back a bit, but if you're looking at having an elevator column and being able to have a design aesthetic, you can't step back an elevator column. It's not like it's Willy Wonka. So that's the challenging part of, of that. I appreciate, and we've talked about this a bit, the, the want or need of protecting view shed. And it's not something that's necessarily protected by the code. It's not something that's written into our ordinances for protection. It does impact the neighborhood. And the thing that I keep going back to is that out of the pieces that impact the neighborhood, the people that I've talked to are even concerned about it being at the 28-foot height from the back corner, which is legal in our, in our ordinance currently. And so that's the part that is challenging me on this, is that the scope indifference of having the smaller portions up on top of that rooftop are not necessarily going to change the overall size of the building. They're going to be that way, because that's the height allowed by our ordinance currently. I do appreciate, and I mentioned this both to the Conover's and to Mike, that I appreciate the fact that he actually did change the plans to be a larger setback than what's required by the code. I, I don't think in seven years on Planning Commission, and five and a half years now on, on council, I don't think I've ever seen anyone do that before, to offer to cut back space. I'm not saying, I mean, thank you for doing it. Is it, you know, angelic? Maybe not, I don't know. But it's not, it's, it's something that I haven't seen before. It's something that I've never experienced someone be willing to do and offer before. I think it shows at least a willingness for compromise, which is a good thing in a community. I don't know, other than the suggestion of looking at cutting it down by a floor so that the mechanical sections fit within the same height envelope, or much closer to it, I don't know what else changes the scope of this building for the sake of this. The below grade, Tina, thank you for mentioning that on your conversation. I appreciate why you would want it to be all set back all the way across, but I also think that that area is going to be covered, because it's going to be utilized as the driveway space. And so while it may extend back underground, the actual use of it will be something that is covered and not experienced. I do have concerns, just because it's a massive slope. That hillside is interesting in terms of geology. Trying to figure out how to do this safely, I think, is going to be part of the plan. That doesn't, unfortunately, necessarily fall under our purview. It falls under the actual plan checks and working with the building inspector and that part of it. And then the only other thing that I was going to bring up perhaps as a recommendation is looking at the noise concerns. We know that hotels bring noise, vacation rentals bring noise, new neighbors bring noise. So the only thing I can think of that may help that we've seen in other larger projects like this is looking at some kind of offering from the contractor or owner regarding window packet replacement, if that would be something that you'd be willing to assist with, that would perhaps allow for residents in the area to partake in that for their houses, to be able to help with some of the noise issues. I don't know if that's going to help. I know, I see your face, Tina, I'm sorry, but it's the only thing I know that may be of assistance, at least to help. The zoning in that area is zoned for special commercial. It's the way that that whole stretch of road is designed. So anyway, again, the question throwing back to, to Kurt and Mike about possibly reducing it by a floor is the only other suggestion that I have that would be something I would ask again, so.
Well, I personally wouldn't support them taking a floor off. And the window thing, when I talked to Mike today, it's like, you know, once it's there and it's up, if that is a noise issue, you probably wouldn't mind putting in some double pane windows or whatever. But I mean, if their, if their houses are as airy as mine, it doesn't matter what kind of windows you put in there, really. But, but maybe that is something he'd be willing to do. But once it's built, and see what, see, sees exactly what would happen. I wouldn't put them in, I wouldn't require that you put them in beforehand. I just think that would be something that would be discussed later, perhaps. Oh, please.
And I agree with you. I think that when you have, when we have the space built, right now, it's just only a lounge with a soft drink or whatever. There's no liquor license, there's no food, there's no, it's just a lounge. It's a place for, for the guests to go and sit. But once it's built, and we have the barriers there, and we have the soundproofing in place, now you can run decimal reads and figure out what noise you're generating or not. And when I come back for, if I do come back for a liquor license, or a restaurant, or food, or whatever in the future, and we come in with, actually, when we have to, special events, I have to apply for a special permit for that, we have to show all of that stuff. And if there's something that we're doing that is too noisy, we're probably not going to do it. Because again, I got, right below it, I got guests in the hotel. So it's as much of a concern of mine as it is to the neighbors. So I think then we can address those things. Right now, we don't have a layout of the actual activity, what we're doing, you know, to that event, so.
Mike, if you don't put the bar in with the storage, do you have to have the restroom still?
Anybody that goes up there, I mean, if you think about it, if you go up there and you are sitting there with your family, what are you going to go down to your room to go to the restroom? That's not really how it works. And soon as I open up a common space in any part of the hotel, I have to comply with ADA. So that's, I mean, I don't really have control over that. That's, that's just kind of a standard.
I think I was just thinking of places like the Aurora or the Avalon, where they have rooftop deck. And again, they're relatively quiet unless there's an event happening, like a small wedding, which has to be, you know, before a certain time and no sand uplocation. But the, for the lobby, there's no, there is, or there's a small powder room, there is, right, next to the luggage storage?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know. Part of me was thinking, like, do you have to have that space up there to add height to the building there? Can you cut it there, and then it's just the elevator portion that also is the-
Yeah, the inside of the elevator, the inside of that storage is only eight feet.
Right.
So the top portion, you got a foot of roof or ledger that you're going to be putting up, and then on top of that, you've got three feet of a parapet wall, so you can put that equipment down inside of it, so nobody sees it. That's the purpose of the height. If there's a way we can do it shorter, and, I mean, I'm not married to having it be 12 feet, there's no reason or 10 feet, but it's only to try to take care of the equipment noise. And if I don't put it there, I put it on the deck, and I think that's far worse.
Right, it's going to be a lot noisier.
Right, so if you lose the bathrooms up there, could you put the HVAC in where the bathrooms are? And can you bring, would that bring the height down?
You would put it probably in the back storage area, I would think. Yeah, in that same vicinity, yes. And if the, if, yeah, that's where it would probably, it has to go somewhere in that location.
Right, because I, I, a lot of my coworkers stay at the Avalon, so I frequent that rooftop quite a bit, and there's no restroom up there. And so it's just like, you just got to run down to whoever room there is.
Right.
And go down there, you know, but-
And at least yours has an elevator, too.
But let's say he's planning on having a wedding up there, and he gets a special permit for that, where, where are those people supposed to go? Because they will be hotel guests.
I bring in porta-potties and put one on the roof.
There was a powder room in the bathroom.
Yeah, there's an elevator, go down to the lobby.
There's an elevator into the lobby.
Yeah. If we had to have, very good point, if you have a wedding, that you have so many books out the hotel, and once they're wedding on the roof, so all that their, people that are going to the wedding are staying in that same facility, now what happens is they go up on the roof, and if there's any guests, which you know there will be some guests that are coming over for just the wedding, what do they do to go to the bathroom?
No, they're saying they go down the elevator to your little powder room.
Yeah, they go down four floors, yeah. And I think part of the reason why some of the, the hotels that are existing don't have that is because the whole rooftop thing has become a deal after, over time. When those buildings were built, there were no bathroom facilities except designed to go on a roof. So they just didn't use them back then, so.
Any other questions or concerns or comments that y'all want to make? Okay, so-
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council? First of all, let me ask another question. If we said, okay, remove this, remove that, everything would have to then go back to the Planning Commission, or everybody thing would be now us because we're the de novo guys, right?
And that's why you have a pretty extensive resolution, which incorporated all the Planning Commission items, because this is a de novo hearing.
De novo, okay. Well-
And then I just, can I just address a little bit, too? Because I know Tina had asked if it was an encroachment to have stuff on the outside area. I don't believe, and Kelly, maybe speak to this, I don't believe having non-permanent items in an open space is considered an encroachment on a piece of property. Is that right?
That's correct. The municipal code actually in Title IX has a list of things that are allowed to be in setback areas, and things of that nature, like patio furniture, or even staircases, or things of that nature are allowed to be in a required setback area.
A picnic table, movable barbecue, and an umbrella, and that kind of stuff is not a problem.
Correct.
Okay.
And then because of how the building is built, that's only accessible for employee staff, as opposed to hotel guests to utilize, right? Okay.
Well, does, um, can I make a motion? I usually never do. Find the project, I make a motion to find the project qualifies for streamlined review under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, Guidelines 15332, Class 32, and full development projects. Adopt the findings to support approval of conditional use permit. Six, adopt the findings to support approval of a variance. Seven, adopt the findings to support approval of the site plan. Eight, adopt the findings to support approval of a coastal development permit. And nine, find the project consistent with the 2024 annual growth policy.
And Mayor, if I could add, adopt the attached resolution, which-
What's that say?
Was, adopt the attached resolution.
And adopt the attached resolution. There a second?
All second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Four ayes, one no. Councilmember Schickling.
Can I just ask why?
It's, it's what Lisa was talking about. It's, it's like, so the 28 feet is cool, but that extra 10 feet for the people that are behind, it's, it's very disruptive and, you know, property value, just all kinds of stuff. I just, and if, and I know that he needs to have the hotel rooms in order to make his nut back, you know? He's, he's obviously putting out a ton of money to do this project, and, you know, he doesn't even own the thing. So losing nine rooms, which I would love to see, would hurt his pocketbook. You know, so if there was just some way to balance out, you know, if, so if there was just that little elevator part, and not that giant roof, because it's like 10 feet, I mean, it's, it's big. It's a big area up there. And, you know, I was just hoping that there could maybe be something happen there. You know, I mean, Mike, you know, I've talked to you a lot, and I, I know this project has to go forward, but just looking for, I know you've made a lot of concessions, but I just, that, that's my heart. I voted my heart.
No, perfect, okay, great. Okay, pass for the one. All righty, item number seven.
Under General Business, item number seven, we're asking the council authorize the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with Perk Water Corporation to continue the maintenance and operations of the City of Avalon's wastewater system for a six-month period. This would include a 3% CPI-adjusted rate over the current rated. Jackie Cardera.
Hi. Hi, City Council. As City Manager Maestros pointed out, this is to authorize for us to go in agreement with Perk for the current operations and maintenance and management monitoring of our wastewater system. For the last six months, we've been negotiating back and forth on a contract. However, we've found some new setbacks on it that require a contract extension, one being prevailing wage. And the way the contract, the previous one was written, is convoluted in the sense that it's makes it really, makes the contractor outline every single overtime, monthly bill, every purchase, and it doesn't hold them accountable. And it makes it really difficult for city staff to manage that. In the end, the city has to pay for everything, no matter what. That's what, almost the contract is, is written. So we're asking for this letter, so we can continue negotiating during the six-month period of going, going back and forth and relooking at prevailing wage, looking at what it takes for the operation of that wastewater system. The Perk is asking for a 3% CPI-adjusted rate. And Perk is here in case you have any specific questions on the contract.
Just what, what's the total for the contract?
Oh, I don't have the total.
And then, and we figure 3%, but, I mean, we're talking a million bucks? How much, how much is this contract?
I want to say 1.4.
What's that?
1.4.
Oh, okay.
In that neighborhood, I believe, yes, with the annual.
Okay, I was just curious. Yeah, okay. All right. We have questions of Mrs. Cardero.
Yeah, this is just extending it six months.
Right, with the 3%.
Real contract together, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Then I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with Perk Water Corporation to continue the maintenance and operations of the City of Avalon's wastewater system for a six-month period at a 3% CPI-adjusted rate.
All second.
And Chris, did you want to say anything?
Mayor and Council, Chris Maines, Regional Director for Perk. I've been with Perk since April, so I'm going on a slower six months. During that time, I've joined Perk, we've kind of separated some projects between me and my colleague, who's another regional manager, and I lucked out and got Avalon. So, first time out here, pleasure meeting Jackie. She's been great to work with over Zoom calls and the phone calls, and I think we're on the right path. Again, a- Again, a more, a contract that's more, has more context to it and understanding. When I first went through it, I did a lot of redlining from my experience of contracts before. But I think we're on the right path. It's what a great partnership. Met the staff for the first time today. And man, they're passionate about their services here. So glad to be here. Thank you for allowing our service and partnership and hope to see you in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if I, if I may add, Perk has been wonderful to work with these last six months. There was a lot of deferred maintenance and capital improvement projects since 2020, as you all know. And they've been diligently tackling and really working with us on how to prioritize and plan and what needs to be done. And they've just been really, really great.
There's a motion and a second. Let's call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
No further business. Meeting's adjourned.